Meeting of Athens City Planning Commission. Thursday, September 17th. It's 12:06. RJ is maybe on his way, so I'm taking his place for now. First thing is we have four people out of five present, so we can... We have a quorum. Disposition of minutes.
How about a notice?
Oh, is anyone here hoping to speak? Okay. This here... Okay. How about you, Jeff? Are you going to speak on one of the cases?
Yes.
Okay. Stand up, all of you, please. Say, "Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you whoever?" I can't... "As you know it, as you know it." Yeah. Okay. I would say, "God, I believe in that." Okay. I'm already out of hand, see? Disposition of minutes. Okay. So, we had a bed and breakfast discussion, and I have to say that the yellow thing caused me some pause. But I believe that you all think it's solved. Air, B&amp;B, with the exemption of... are in violation. And we didn't give explicit... The zoning board didn't give... If we could clarify that, the zoning board did not give explicit approval to Airbnb. They gave them...
The air part of it, I think, is irrelevant. What the violation... The reason I said they're in violation is because they're not owner occupied.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the definition that we were sticking to. No matter where they were at, they were to be owner occupied, correct?
And they're... And... But they are in vi... They are non-conforming uses, as opposed to being in violation.
Um... Well, the one's got a temporary variance. So, they'll have to come back to get another variance for not being owner occupied. So, um, the other one...
If their application preceded...
Yeah, the other one had the permit. I mean, they received their variance, so it would be a non-conforming. Yeah. So...
I'm going to urge them to go to the...
So, the term violation is probably...
Not a good word.
Not a good word.
Thank you. So, I solved the problem, not the one you were looking for. Did you get your problem solved?
I believe so. The Airbnb was kind of silent then.
I think we just take the word "air" out of there. I don't care if it's Airbnb, or if it's bed and breakfast, or if it's any other media source. Air is just a media source. So, it's the idea of bed and breakfast, period.
Perhaps council will expand it after they listen to the terms of opinions on it. Okay. So, is there a motion, then, to adopt?
I'll move.
I'll second. You go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay. And I hope the minutes reflect the word "non-conforming." All in favor?
Right violation. Aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved, 4-0. We have case number 1519, Robert Hughie... Huey? Huey? 13744 Mansfield Road is asking for a lot split. And, um... Looks like...
So, this is outside the...
It's the three mile, yeah.
Three mile limits, under five acres, so it has to be reviewed.
Well, I'll explain this one a little bit there. If you've got the, um... This page, the last page of your packet, you can see where it's one large lot. Basically, what he's proposing to do is split that into two parcels. The long slither on the left-hand side would be most of one of the parcels. It obviously does not meet with the depth ratio, but that is not... Not a factor, because the total parcel is 5.76 acres. So, it's over five acres, so that doesn't apply. But the reason he's here is because we are creating a new lot with the 2.82 acre parcel, which is smaller than five acres. And so, therefore, the reason... Hence, the reason for the meeting today and approval, or disapproval, of this proposed lot split. And then also, there's another... The neighbor to the east of it has agreed to, um, transfer a little bit of land, .3830 acres, to the proposed new lot, um, that'll be held continuous and contiguous. That part of it doesn't have to come through here, because it's just a transfer of land between owners. So, the real reason we're here is for the formation of a new 2.82 acre parcel.
Okay. And looking at this, it looks like the Health Department signed off on it for... It's okay for sewer disposal?
Yes. I talked to Chuck Hammer on the ninth, and he was fine with everything.
Okay.
On this, um... The remainder, I guess, the 5.766...
Uh-huh.
The residual, yeah?
The residual, thank you.
I'm going to get a flash...
Are these two separate parcels? 0.866 and 4.894? And then I don't see where they're tied.
Right there. Here. Is that it?
See? See where it says parcel one and parcel?
The entire... This is all one lot right now. And where you see the line being drawn...
The dotted line?
The dotted line is an old subdivision parcel line that... It's irrelevant. That's irrelevant right now. So, this is all going to be one parcel, the 5.76 acres. Yes, you're absolutely right. 4.894 acres and .0866 acres are two pieces that were in... The way it's... The way it's plotted, or way in the sections that the city there... On the survey, that... But it's not a combination of two pieces. It's already done that way. There's parcels all over the place that have old section lines going through them. That's a section line. That's an old section line, is what that is.
Okay.
And you can see, Paula, if you look at the, uh, the last page...
It's hard to see in that.
It's a single parcel, but you can see that that section line's relative present there.
I'm sorry.
The black dotted line going through there, that's an old section line. It just indicates that... The way surveys are done, they're done in ranges, sections, et cetera, broke down into small squares, and everything's broke down into sections. We've got a surveyor here that can answer this better than I. But I'm doing it... So, that's an old section line, is what that is. So, really, it's irrelevant.
Better to see in the call list.
It looks like John.
But when it's all done, it's going to be this big, long, honking, out-of-conformity lot, right?
Yes. But again, if it's full of five acres, we don't have to deal with the...
That is correct.
With the depth ratio...
Not on five acres or greater.
Hmm. Is it in our interest?
Um, if it's in three miles, I guess if we annex Mansfield Road soon.
Oh, yeah, right.
Do we plan to annex Mansfield Road in the near future?
No, I'm planning...
I just want to ask that the way the line is drawn on the 2.82, coming down and how it curves and whatever, does it capture the totality of that building that I see in this ortho photo?
Mm-hmm.
There's no building on the residual.
I'm not talking about the residual.
He's talking... She's talking about the one we're supposed to be talking about.
I will let the property owner just clarify that, because yes, the house is not indicated as to where it's at on the survey, so...
It looks like it's closed.
See, that's the one I...
Do you see it?
Oh, yes, it is.
If I were to draw that...
Paul, it's located on the survey. It's abbreviated as H.C.
Yes, it is on there. So, yes, it does capture the entire house and its totality.
I don't know why I saw it.
House and garage are on the 5.76.
Do you see? Yeah, I still know what you're talking about.
No, I mean, here, this guy.
Interesting. Yeah, we're looking at this line. We look at this line. I assume it's straight.
What is confusing you is this overlay. I know what it is now. We had a problem with this. This overlay on the county auditors is way off compared to what's in reality. That's what's throwing you for a loop. That thing should be shifted... As you're looking at the paper, should be shifted...
To the right.
To the right, a large amount. Yeah.
The projection is skewed on it.
Ah, it's not the only time.
It sounds like...
Just as long as you're saying that it's capturing... On the parcel being created there is a building.
The parcel... The residual has the house. The new lot being created will be vacant, the proposal for a new house to be built on.
So, this is going like that?
And again, it's been signed off for septic, and he looks for... Calling this for accuracy, too, for the county engineer, but since...
The house and the garage are going with the 5.760.
This property, this line right here...
See, we don't have that pretty picture that you have.
This line right here, in all honesty, is almost all the way that way in line with the street line. That's how much this thing is all. So, take this whole outline and shift it that far to the east there. So, that line is almost where that line is.
So, when I see this coming through... Draw that on there.
You saw that on there? If that... This line should be here, or this line should be way over here.
Wow, that is really different.
And this thing should be down to here, almost. And that's why he's doing this little slither here that incorporates that little bit of green space still on that. Comes across, so it's basically laid out like this. And then, from that point there...
Yeah, this... I want to see this.
It looks like it's shifted over this whole distance.
From that point down, sort of like that. That's how far this thing is.
That's pretty far off.
Yes, it was. And we noticed that when we were working on this, because I actually started with it. It's a great question, because I had the same problem.
Well, the photo's okay. It's just the imposition of...
Yeah. The overlay of the boundary line from the auditor site is all... Yeah.
That's pretty common. Yeah.
Yeah. The people take...
Never seen it this far.
That's really far off.
It's off in my lot.
I have seen something like that. I've seen where they actually have the total angle difference, so it's a bigger wedge.
Always...
Sorry?
My property's way out.
Yeah.
Maps is not the territory.
No, they're total.
So, yeah, just take that whole overlay and shift it... I can't sit here and say 20 feet, because you don't know what 20 feet is, but...
There's a... There's a 20.
I'm just grabbing at numbers.
Scale.
Scale wise, yeah.
Chairperson?
Go ahead. It's a free one.
I would make the motion that we accept the lot split of case 15-19.
Do I have a second?
13744 Mansfield Road.
Let's see. Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about it some more?
No. I said, are there other issues you want to put on the motion?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Until maps get done.
Until the maps get better. It'll never happen.
Is that our problem?
No. No, it's the county auditor's problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Pass is 4-0.
Now, all those lines will get fixed.
Yeah. We hope.
No, no, we'll have to start over. Thank you. Next is Southeastern Ohio Real Estate. That's 1520.
They are not here, but it's up to you. It's pretty self-explanatory. Do you remember the Pioneer subdivision that we did? The amendment to... To eliminate the subdivision? The abandonment. That's the word I was looking for.
Abandonment of the subdivision.
Abandonment of the subdivision.
I recall there were no future plans for the property.
Yes.
And that was just about two or three months ago.
Um, well, now there are. So, it... As you can see, it's a three-acre parcel. I included the entire survey and the abandonment permit in your packet from what we did August 3rd.
So, did not John do this as well?
Yeah. No, I'm not with him.
Okay.
This one... Who did this one?
It says John.
Brenner. Yeah.
I'm not with Brenner.
He's with Buckley.
Well, I got this all confused. I thought you acted like you were on that.
So anyways, it meets all the requirements, but I just tried to call them. They're not here, so...
So, what was the total acreage again, remind me?
12 acres of the entire parcel. They're wishing to break.
So, we're... I mean, is this a wise way to do it? Is it... Or is it going to preclude something else? Are there... Are we going to see four lots of this size? I mean, you can't project, but you probably have...
First of all, I can't really speak to something that's not mine. I mean, number one. But number two, I don't see how they could do four lots of that size, because...
They'd run out of frontage.
They'd have frontage issues and road problems.
Unless they did a subdivision.
Unless they did a subdivision, but they'd have to...
Right, which they just abandoned.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but it was...
Which is annoying, I get it. But is there any thought to bringing this forward as...
As an overall abandonment, none to my knowledge.
Or a subdivision?
None to my knowledge. I mean, I remember them speaking here that they... Their prospective client is the New Life Assembly Church.
They want to build a new...
They were there wishing to build their new church, is... And I think they knew that somewhat back then, but it wasn't a done deal, so...
Would, um...
But they don't want the entire parcel. A good part of this is in the flood plain as well, but this... This three acres is not. It's closer to the east property line, where you see the hock-hocking bike way on the east side of the property of the larger one. That would be where the floodway is.
Where?
Or flood plain. It's not in the floodway.
And I see they have a 20-foot easement to the next-door neighbor. And it says in the list that they have a lift station as the Plains Water District, so that's to the sewer system of the Plains?
The sewer system... The sewer district is of the Plains, yes.
I was supposed to carry it in Buckland.
These are existing.
Yeah. Well, again, it says pump station and lift station.
It's probably on the other side of the road.
Yeah. Sorry.
Pump stations usually imply water. Lift station implies sewer, if you might remember correctly. So, when it says pump slash lift...
Yeah.
I was just asking. Well, okay.
When council took this action vacating the lots, did that vacate the roadways?
Um, you know what? We need to table this.
Okay.
I just noticed that when you said that easement coming in there... If that's a new easement, then that throws in a whole nother loop here.
Somebody move to table this?
I move we table.
Second?
That's number 1520.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The motion, or the case?
I didn't even see that. When I saw the other one...
Till somebody shows up and tells us what's going on.
1520. I think it's got serious flaws until he does the easement, right?
Uh, who seconded it?
You did, didn't you? Mr. Christie?
To table.
No, I think table.
Table. I thought you did, Nancy.
Okay.
Is that what kids flout?
I shouldn't be table. I think I can barely take care of what I'm doing.
Kristi and I would gladly step up if needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I could do. Obviously, we don't have enough information. We can't move forward without their telling.
Well, and if there is an easement going into the property to the rear, and where they're looking to have a shared drive for access to the residual part of the property, that triggers the same issue we were talking about on this, a major subdivision, and as an access easement, and that's potentially so. It's... And I'm not going to answer their question.
Okay. Let's consider table.
Yeah.
It's table.
Yep.
Provided we had a second.
I... I can second. Go ahead. I can second.
The mayor made a motion.
I will second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Twice table.
It's table.
Fourth to zero. Now, we're on to 1521, 1522.
Okay.
Old Peach Ridge.
Yeah. What we've got here are... Is a... It's a 9.8 acre tire. 9.8 acres entire parcel. It was annexed in back in 2010. The owner applicant is wishing to split the property into three parcels. Two of the parcels being about two and a half acre parcels that will be fronting on to Old Peach, and this is what the application is. The dilemma that we're coming across, any different options, are the residual property wouldn't be restricted in water and sewer with this split. I did speak with the applicant, and I did speak with Andy Stone this morning. They are proposing, and he's going to pass out a revised drawing to you, to put a note on there for the residual property. Water and sewer utilities exist on Old Peach Ridge Road at Stroud's Run Road. Water and sewer utility shall be extended within a city of right-of-way per city of Athens specifications. So, that's how they're going to get water and sewer to the residual property. It's coming up about 485 feet from Cable Lane, Stroud's Run, to the residual property. And I talked to Andy about that. He said he's fine with that, as long as they build it to city specifications, and in all likelihood, the sanitarial either has to be forced or on a... Yeah, probably forced or lift station of some sort, so...
All this property is within the city now?
All this property is within the city now, yes.
Okay. I would point out, I was looking at our city GIS, and this is still, according to the GIS, outside the city limits.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. That needs to be updated, then.
Probably so. It was done in 2010, I think, though, wasn't it?
The auditor site showed it in, I believe.
Okay. I went to the city one, because I was looking at parcels, so...
Yeah, but it was annexed in. I have the minutes of it here, on April 12, 2010, through city council.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, I actually have the GIS map here, and it shows it out.
Does it still?
The auditor, it shows it in.
Okay.
I guess it depends on point of view.
So, some of the emails that I was...
You got emails, a bunch of emails from me, right?
Yeah, the emails that I was sending to you about what Andy and I were first requesting was to have an easement going down the middle of the two new properties to the rear property for utility easement, but by doing so, that triggers a major subdivision.
Okay. Put this one away.
It would be a major subdivision, because it becomes a road or a private...
There are three requirements to trigger a major subdivision. A lot split with more than five lots. A lot split that requires the road to be widened, or an access easement, or three, a utility or drainage easement that is allotted.
And that's where it kicks it in?
That's where it kicks it in, yes.
Okay. While we're still talking, the northeast boundary is beyond that cliff that's there. You know, if you're driving up on the bypass, it's very, very steep. Where is it on this map? I don't have a color map. Do you have a color map?
I saw what I did. Hold on a second. Maybe I don't.
Oh, it's shy. How come you always give him that?
Actually, I printed myself. I sometimes look at this early before the packet comes out. I saw what I did.
Obviously, Nancy, look at the questions.
Yeah, I just...
You're talking this part, this picture?
Yeah, the colored one that you have.
The pretty ones.
Copy are supposed to do that. When I print, I said...
My HP6 doesn't do it.
No. I guess the one that we weren't supposed to look at, because you just handed us the new one. I just have a black and white.
And I guess I'm wondering also about... I mean, you know, I have a whole laundry list of issues, mainly because I live in that neighborhood, and the people I... Have no clue this is going to go on. I think they'd like to know where the driveways would be.
All land development issues would be dealt with, and driveways would be dealt with at the time somebody did an application to put a house in.
Mm-hmm. But how about the place where, down the road from it, where they put a driveway in outside the city, and it's falling into the bypass?
Well...
Well, don't say "well."
We try not to let that happen, Nancy. I...
It did happen, and it happened in the city.
Not on my watch. How's that?
Not on his watch.
We'll call him back and slap him, then. Steve, come on now. It's... All right. We're going to go to Mr. Buckley, who's the only one here. Well, I guess everybody's...
This doesn't... To match this.
No, it doesn't, because they're...
You're going to turn it sideways.
Turn it sideways.
Yeah, it's just...
And they're two of us.
It's different.
You know, and what's to prevent them from splitting these lots again?
Nothing.
Well, you have a different picture than I do.
I know.
That's true.
If they tried to add two more lots, then it would be five, and it would go to a major subdivision.
So, it's this area is this.
Why did they just go to a subdivision? Went the wrong way. Got it, Kristi, sorry.
You got it?
Yep. This way.
I see it. Thank you.
Like this.
You wanted a colored one. There you go.
Yes.
Before we... should have the owner come. I know Mr. Buckley's very, is very competent. This looks like a good document and everything, but I just think the owner, you know, we need to have.
And?
I know you say that, doesn't say it, but I'm talking about the spirit of the law.
But the spirit, the code specifically says the developer or his or her representative.
Okay.
So we would have to change the code, Nancy.
I think we ought to change the code.
I looked that up. It specifically says that.
You know, again, the people who live up there who, okay. How about, who checked the right-of-way on the bypass? Did you do that, Mr. Buckley?
Actually, Clinton Kinsley, who works for Buckley Group.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, it's, we found the iron pins that are on, on the right-of-way line.
And is it just before the steep wall of Rock?
Um, I guess I don't, I did not do that personally, so I can't tell you. We don't have a vertical relief shown on the plat, so I can't verify that at this time, but if you'd like to know later, I can.
I don't know that we're gonna have a later, but I'd like to, I guess I think that the terrain is an obstacle in this case.
For the construction purposes, it very well may be.
Well, I mean, not, I mean, construction, you can get the people there to do the work, but I was wondering why, if you couldn't put a no-build grant, I've been following the lakes and, or the reservoirs in Columbus Square, that little, that little fringe of trees may become important. It's not a reservoir, it's a steep cliff, but, you know, I just wonder how, how close are they gonna get?
You talking about the Buckeye Lake one, or the other?
No, all of them.
Okay.
The reservoir Hoover, where they, where they, they just ruled that they can go.
Cut all the trees, all the way down.
Cut down all the trees and repair it. Go figure, it's our state. What would they expect?
I guess, I need a total information of.
You need, you wanna do it systematically?
Understand the utility easements and whatnot.
Yeah.
There, there will be no utility easements. The required, the two lots that are being formed off of Old Peach, have water and sewer.
It's done. Oh, it's not, I mean.
What do I not understand? Andy indicated residual lots.
No, Brent, we can go back to the other one if we want. Not now, not yet.
But, okay, the easement. Dave Hayes, Dave, Brent Hayes.
Brent? Utility easement for this property?
There is, will be no utility easement required now. Andy and I were recommending it, that it would go between the two new parcels.
Yeah, and that would make a major subdivision.
That would make it a major subdivision. They've opted not to do it that way, and have agreed that they will supply water and sewer up Stroud's Run from Cable Lane in the city right-of-way to the residual parcel.
So they will not require an easement for that third residual parcel?
They will not require an easement for that third residual parcel.
On the Stroud's Run side of it.
But they'll be responsible for putting in about 480-foot of water and sewer, according to city specifications, if they want to develop that residual parcel.
Okay.
Do you know if that's the plan?
Yeah, that, that would be.
Do you know if the plan is to develop the residual parcel?
I'm not sure specifically.
You better not say, Mike.
I'm just going on what was still written as of September 11th here. It's a shall, by the way.
Right, and I spoke with Andy this morning. Him and I had a meeting on this, and I spoke to him again this morning, and I said, are you gonna be okay with them running water and sewer up Stroud's Run? And he said, yes. Actually, I texted him, like.
So the comments from Andy Stone from September 11th, 2015, should be struck?
They would be struck. That was a recommendation of Andy and I in our meeting on that day. I stated to him, I said, the applicants have opted to run sewer and water up Stroud's Run from Cable Lane for city specs for residual property on lot split. Are you okay with that? He said, sure, the sewer will likely need a pump. So we have met on it, and he knows what I'm talking about on that, so.
What do you mean, does, does he mean a grinder pump in a house, or does he mean?
It'll probably.
It's all, it'll all go down, but hopefully it'll go in two.
It'll be basically a grinder pump, a lift station, force, basically making a small force main out of it exactly.
But that was only for the residual one? The rest are all forced main?
Just the four, yeah, the other two are okay. The two new lots that'll be over on Old Peach, there is sewer there.
And they would be gravity.
And they would.
Gravity sewer, yeah.
Yeah, those two are okay, as far as utilities go.
It's too bad. It's a, this is a big parcel in the city. It's too bad. There's not some effort to plan it better, to do a better job, you know, so it's not just four lots like my lot, which is just a lot, not a subdivision.
Be three.
I'm sure, I'm sure Matt Geiser wouldn't want to hear me say that. I just, you know, it just seems like it could be better if they worked on it.
Can I ask about this residual lot? Is it, it says here 4.632 on residual on Stroud's Run Road. Is that the 9.810?
The 9.810 is the total lot.
Okay.
That's how we do surveys. See the property hooks on the eastern line of the new, of the two new lots? Those show that.
Is he telling you the entire?
Here, I'll show you.
So.
This 9.81 is the entire parcel.
These property hooks here show that these are part of the 9.81.
This is part of the 9.81.
So that, that no longer means it's tied continuously and continuously?
It is until these lots are sold. They're owned by, over nine until these lots are sold, but.
So this one here is going to be the 4.632?
Yes, correct, correct.
And for, and what would prevent them from making three or four or five lots there?
Probably three lots, right?
Nothing prevents them, but if they do two more lots on it, then you got five, now you're a major.
But if we're doing them as separate cases, then there's not.
We'll know, yeah.
We'll know. I mean, we may not even be here.
Okay, but the records will show.
Provided they find them. But a 65-foot is single family, right?
66.
Yeah, I mean, so we're talking about potentially a much more valuable piece of property if they just did it better. Can we say you can't split it further then? I mean, you know, people up there deserve some consideration. Who? Okay, don't, I won't even ask you that question.
Well, I mean, if it, if it meets the city guidelines of square footage and lot frontage, I don't know if you can say that.
I'm not sure.
I, I don't know, the answer to that.
They'll just come back and say we're discriminating.
Could you tell me where a pump station is for Stroud's Run?
No, I cannot.
In the reservoir? How will?
I don't know where it is.
I know it goes across and then along the highway, but how does, I have a real interest in that. I asked you about that. Do you have any idea? I mean, this has.
Andy says it runs underground.
Well.
I meant under the freeway.
Goodness, how about that?
And he hopes it never breaks, yeah, so.
Because he doesn't have an easement to repair it, is that it?
What's that?
He doesn't have an easement to repair it, or?
Under, under 33? I do not know.
Well, I know under 33, and then it goes parallel to 33 for a while, but how does it get by these lots? Is it in the, is it in the Stroud's Run?
The, the two new lots, or on Stroud's Run?
Either one, I mean, you know, it could be on one side.
Stroud's Run, he told me, it comes up Stroud's Run and goes down Cable Lane. It does not come up past the residual parcel on this. That's why they would be responsible for running it up to this part.
The water?
The water and the sewer, both.
Okay, the water that comes from the tank that feeds my house.
Water that comes from the tank to feed your house.
How does it go? I'd like to know the pathway.
I don't know. I know it runs underneath the freeway, and I thought, he said, it came down through the lots that fed over on Old Peach. Comes through over there.
I have the, I have the GIS map with water and sewer on it. I can show.
That'd be fine.
Well, the, I asked him about, because I think it's, that's.
Okay, so our parcel's right here.
Mm-hmm, and it's.
Water and sewer for the two that are getting split here.
Oh.
Are here. And water and sewer for Stroud's Run, we would have to come up this.
Okay, but there's a.
Can I see that?
Stroud's Run reservoir up there?
Right.
And how is it fed from the pipes across the road is the question. I don't expect you to know that.
The green lines right there?
I don't even know if, I don't even expect Mr. Paskey to notice, but I would like to know where it is, because we may need to alter it. Unless it's under the road and goes back.
This is Stroud's Run, yeah, so, so these two would get supplied with this side.
It's kind of an important thing, isn't it?
And this is the elevation.
To this? To me, it's important. It may not be to you.
So actually, if they split this in half.
Track one and track two seem ready to go, Nancy, as, as good buildable lots, based on what I've seen.
Mm-hmm.
And the residuals got quite the challenge, but that's up to the future.
955?
How about the land development ordinance? I asked you to do that one, too.
And as I said, if anybody comes in for a permit to build on it, then they will have to meet the land development ordinance at that time.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, you know how about this kind of thing? How many buildable lots are there in acre, tract one and two, about, in your, in your general?
Buildable lots?
Buildable lots.
Right now, one.
Yeah.
No, I'm just asking, how many sites? How many house sites are there?
Well, just the two that were.
You think only two?
The split.
Look at the topography of this.
Yeah.
Well, that's the question. I don't know if there are even any.
Well, if you look at site nine.
Are you, are you asking if it can be split again, like?
Well, I've seen all kinds of crazy things in this world, so I'm never gonna say never. But I mean, where do you think the house sites will go on tract one and two?
I, I'm not sure about that in particular. I, I don't know. That's, that would be up to the client.
Don't look at him. He's just gonna say, I don't have to do it. I just want to know, so we're not creating a monster for the future?
I, I honestly don't know the information, but I could get back to you on that.
I mean, you know, look at it.
I, I don't have contours on here. I can't.
This one has contours. It starts at frontage, it starts at 955, and then works its way back to 1,005 feet. So it's about a 50 elevation.
Drive to the run, huh?
Yeah.
I know, I've walked back there.
I'm sure you have, but, you know, so you, you're gonna not have a lot of room to, to build there.
Yeah, you're looking probably on this flat top and maybe over here are the two lots that we proposed.
I think that woman that came in and got this and extended was gonna do the flat top.
That, that would make the most sense. It'd be the least amount of dirt work that you'd have to do.
And, okay, so then, would the driveway come this way? Is that on the?
Honestly, I don't know either. That would be up to the client to have designed.
Mm-hmm.
I, probably the easiest.
Let's talk about the best.
Could be. A lot of times, the best is the easiest, but yeah.
Well, in the engineering world, come on.
Yeah, I, I would say that.
That looks like.
Looks like the flattest entrance into the, kind of the top of the hill.
And that is, okay.
Okay, let's.
It's very confusing. You can take over your line.
No, if I look at these two tracks, track one, I could, you know, looking at topography wise, might be difficult to split in half because of the elevations. The frontage is there with track one. But I think if you try splitting track two, you'd end up essentially having some kind of flag, you'd have to, depth-to-width ratio would be off, I think. So that'd have to come back to, I don't say, I think. I mean, look at, compare what you're looking at there to that type of topography. So they'd have to, track one, I could see actually potentially being split to another, to two lots. Track two, I don't know if you'd have, you could do it, because, it depends, you could cut it as a little square in front, I guess. But then another one would, the other one would not have the proper width-to-rise, uh, depth ratio.
Unless they divide it and give it to each other again, it'll come back before this group, whatever the composition of it is in the future.
And if there's a split, would actually, anymore would actually start putting into the subdivision rules.
I would move to approve case number 1521 and 1522 on Peach Ridge Road, these lot splits.
With the condition of they do the report on the residual.
You've got a condition?
Yes. That they, that they meet the, the, did you give them all on one of the?
Yes, yep. Requirements, Andy.
And also that we get some information on where Stroud's Run feed goes in and make sure that's covered.
I think Andy would have.
I don't know.
Well.
I mean, I don't know. I would like, would you allow that friendly amendment?
I still need to understand the condition.
The condition's gonna be the water and sewer utilities exist on Old Peach Ridge Road and Stroud's Run Road. Water and sewer utility shall be extended within city right-of-way per Athens, per city of Athens specifications for the residual lot.
What, it's placed on the survey? Is that enough?
The one, yes.
Does the language need to be included, just like you stated?
I think it needs to be just said, because that's not what would, he just brought this in. That was not what this letter was, and we will make that change.
Okay, so with that condition, and what, what?
I would like, this is not the domestic service laterals for each house. This is the main feed down, so could we find out, is, could it be right here? That little square, that easement, 2.275?
No, no, that little easement, no, that, Clinton, you can tell, but that's the old turnaround for when they were building the bypass, or 33 through there for ODOT. That's an ODOT easement that they used as a staging area when they.
Why is it still on there?
It's still there, but it's, that's what that is.
That's correct.
Okay, I guess I can't convince anyone else. It's serious.
I'm petitioning some other members down the road.
You have a motion so far, right?
Yeah, and I asked to put the condition on, if there is any impact on Stroud's Run reservoir, which isn't a pertinent, it's not, it's the, it's the main water system. It's not a.
The main water system does not run through this property. I know that.
You sure?
Yes. Yes, and actually, it probably.
Where does it run?
It runs down, Andy told me it runs on Old Peach, and it services the houses on the other side of Old Peach. It may actually run a little bit behind the houses on the other side of Old Peach. So it does not run through this property.
It either runs on the other, other side is like.
Uh-huh, exactly.
So where does it cross the road and go up to the reservoir?
It cross what road?
Peach Ridge.
33, you mean?
No, no, it crosses 33 and a parallel 33, but I want to know where it is when it goes.
It's not on this property, so I don't know. It does not go through this property.
Is that something that needs to be known today, or is that something that can be reported?
Well, you know, I mean, I, we only saw this Tuesday. It's been two days. I looked at the, I mean, you know, we don't get enough informa, I feel like I don't get enough information, or, but then I'm a pain in the neck sometimes, so.
This whole state highway easement has me thrown for a loop. I don't know why they would want property up there. Makes no sense, does it?
It's probably made sense another time. It made sense another time.
Okay.
Okay. Second, do we have a second then? There's Paula's thing on there. I can't see anything.
And John's condition.
I will second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm, I'm gonna vote no. I'm not happy with getting the information late, and I feel like I didn't have enough time to get my homework done, so it's a no.
But the passage is the same.
Three to one. I wish RJ were here. He could mediate. Mr. Buckley did a good job.
That's Clinton. Works for Buckley.
Look at how, look at how nice this thing looks. Is that, I mean, you know, could you make a form, by the way, and have this just be on the computer?
I thought it was on the computer.
It is on the computer.
So then, why don't you have it writable and then type it in, so it's?
Some people like hard copy.
Hard, okay. I'd like to see a leader copy.
I don't think it was available.
No, it's not. Public record, you know, it'd be nice to have it so it looks good, decent, some of this.
There's people.
Yours look good.
I think they download it as a PDF and then.
All right, so we, we tabled.
Yeah.
Something 12.
1520.
1520.
I would move that we remove from the table 1520, case 1520. Southeast Ohio real estate.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back.
Swear, Brandon.
Brent, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth as you know it?
I do.
I know it. They also say, so help me God, but, okay. So could you come up and answer this, the question, I think, up here? Thank you.
I don't know how much time, but he told him to call. He thought the meeting was at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Selling appeals or something.
So we, we were, we were ready to pass it, but no, now, Mr. Paskey can take over.
Brent, the issue that we have here, I, that's the existing curb cut coming into the property on this thing. The, the problem we're having here is, it says 25-foot ingress and egress easement to be conveyed. If there is an access easement that's going to the property, to the rear or the residual part, then that makes this into a major subdivision application. I guess if you're wanting to try to get approval today, we take that easement off of there and worry about how you're gonna get access to the rest of this property later, or are you wishing for the church and the residual property to have the same curb cut and the same driveway coming in for both parties, or the whole, basically, what's, you, do you know the future plans of the rest of the property? Or have any idea of, is it gonna remain all one parcel? Are you looking to split it up even more, or do you know?
I think we'd like to have three parcels when it's all said and done.
Three parcels with one curb cut?
That, that could be subject to change. I mean, I don't want, lock the, you never know, you know, somebody will come along. Right now, it's the church.
Right.
But we don't want to be, we don't want to landlock something, or, we'll leave our options open.
So really.
You need to do something.
So, to remove that today may indeed do that.
You could landlock some.
Do you have a copy of what we're looking?
I don't. Is that what, John Branner?
Is that John Branner?
Yeah, look, look, see where you got your curb cut, where the driveway is there? And it's a shared, shared access road?
Yeah.
With that being highlighted or done the way it is, that, that could trigger this being a major subdivision, so I, what I'm almost suggesting is that you eliminate that if you want to try to get the three acres today, and just, you know, worry about the rest of the nine acres down the road, if and when you know what you're gonna do and how that's gonna be split up, and then the church has their own access coming in off of River Road to the property.
I don't think I'd better do that.
I wouldn't.
I would.
I wouldn't even advise you to.
Okay.
So what, what, what's the next, what do we need to do?
We can table it again, and you can.
Well, this could be considered maybe the preliminary meeting. I'd have to, I'll call John, but it, it basically need a, a large plat like you had of, of the whole parcel, and, and it's gonna be a major subdivision at that point, so it's, you know, the big 24 by 36. One of these here, they get signed off, but it has to go to city council and everything else.
Can I have this guy write on this?
Yeah. Brent, you might want this one.
Oh, thanks.
I may be typoid Mary, so I touched that one much more.
She touched that one, too, so you're in.
Yeah, but not as much.
And that's fine, if you wish to go that route and get everything done, so that way you're, you know, have everything in place the way you want it.
And the reason for the major subdivisions is because of the easement?
Correct.
That's the only reason.
That's the only reason, yes. Unless you go with more than five lots, but it doesn't sound like that's your intention.
No.
I'm not, 25-foot ingress and egress easement, that's not our standard, is it?
It's 25 on each side of the property line, it's 50 overall. So that would be fine.
That could serve up to how many parcels?
50 can serve the three easily. The county, the county usually goes, and I use what Bob Eichenberg's old rules was, 50-foot, 30-foot wide for the street or what area for minimum, so this, this is meeting their requirement of what the, he always did. I'd have to talk to Miranda, is that her name now? What she'd want to do, but I'm sure it's the same, same guidelines.
Well, if this is being viewed as a preliminary, we should get all our questions right now.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
My question is really not about that, but what about the no left turn situation on that, with that property?
The ODOT road, you know, on the.
On the, on the, on thirty-three. I always wondered why you didn't think about going under the bridge the way the county engineer had talked about when they were.
They talked about that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in the long run, it might make more money from the development. I don't know. That would be my, because I think the no left turn will be a nuisance after a while.
We're not talking about this lot, are we? We're talking about thirty-three inches Johnson.
Way out on the highway now.
Well, if you're going to go out on the highway, how many people are beyond it, do you know? I mean, there's just a few houses along that road.
Okay.
I'm just talking about a big picture development. I thought the engineer had a really good idea.
Brent's talked about that in the past. It was proposed as a farmer's market about trying to get funding to go underneath the highway. Because we know ODOT's not going to allow that to return left entrance.
Oh, no, I mean, it's just too, too much. Okay, so should we?
Tom told me that they, the church is aware of that. Is that correct, Brent?
Oh, yeah, there's a big sign there.
Yeah, I mean, they know, when they're, they know that they're going to build there, that their patrons can't turn left coming out of there, so.
So this is three acres from the twelve point oh five, so the residual's like nine?
Correct.
Couldn't understand what Brainer did here. He must be talking about road fronts.
Yeah, I just wonder about, they'll have to elevate, right? Because the county enforces subdivision, or I mean, blood plane.
I thought this property was outside of the.
Portions of the parcel are the whole or in the blood plane.
But not this one?
On this survey, I do not know, since it's outside the city.
I mean, it's not our, you know, permitting. I just wondered.
If it's in the blood plane, they'll have to file Athens County Blood Development standards, most definitely.
I've just seen water out of two.
Major subdivision outside the city, so this state recommission is not applicable?
Actually. Only twenty-one, Paula.
Okay.
Only subdivision regulated. Wait a minute, then we just, the easements were for utilities and drainage. This is not, this is an access, this would just, this would require a variance by council for an access easement. It would not require a major. Any type of easement, easement of access or utilities. I don't think so, Dan. I didn't bring it.
What do you need? Subdivision regs twenty-one?
Yeah. I meant to pick that book.
Should they?
I don't know where you're going to find it though.
Twenty-one oh seven.
So it's almost one o'clock, almost one o'clock, and we are at seven.
I, I have to go, but I just.
Would it hurt to wait two weeks, Brent? So you can figure out?
It doesn't sound like we've got any choice.
What'd you say?
It doesn't sound like we have any options unless we.
Well, you may have an option. You make Tristan turn and find out he can do it that way, but.
Yeah, I don't, we don't want to give up an easement today, though. I don't, I can know that for sure. Just to get it done, so we can wait two weeks.
We return it to the table?
I move it to the table. Second, all in favor?
Aye. You said second, right?
Yeah.
Christie first. I guess we tabled again, so we have some more time.
Yeah, so you'll have, you'll be on next time.
And then we'll know what, somebody will let us know what we need for next time.
I think you can talk to Mr. Paskey.
Okay.
Okay.
Good enough.
All right, so planner, city plant, thank you, no communications.
Remove from table.
Move board.
Yeah, it's been tabled, so we'll revisit next.
There's a, my turn, Nancy?
I know, that's what I said, communications, planner, director of.
I have a communication to start with. On Monday evening at six PM at the community center, ODOT is hosting a meeting to, they're in the process of designating state bike routes across the state of Ohio. And they wanted to get feedback from the local bicycling community about the best routes to use through Athens County. So if anybody's interested in attending, that's at six PM in room B of the community center on Monday, the twenty-first. That's all I have for communications. I'm going to give you my report as well, a couple of updates.
Okay.
The only major update I have is relating to, I'm serving on the farmer's market committee that was put together by the Athens Foundation. And we did a presentation on Monday to Athens City Council relating to the possibility for a future home for the farmer's market, which you've all read about in the newspaper. Bob Eichenberg, myself and Larry Crowder, we're on the site planning subcommittee and through, we evaluate about fifteen different pieces of real estate around Athens. And through our evaluation, our, the recommendation of the committee as a whole was to communicate, to discuss with the city the possibility of using the dog park site on the East State Street Park campus. So that is at least a discussion with city council. There is a ridiculous amount of work that would be needed to be completed prior to making a decision as to how, whether to move forward or to accept it. There's been, there is some concerns already being noted about traffic, which is a, is definitely a concern that needs to be addressed. As, as planning commissioners, I think we're all aware that Title forty-one, which this would most likely have to go through a site plan review process. If there's an expected number of, of traffic during peak hour, it is required that a traffic impact study be done as part of a project to verify what impacts a new use would have. And if it is, if it does have a significant impact, then how to, how to alleviate those impacts. So that would be part of this process, I believe.
Department of Interior guidelines for removing something from recreation?
This would still be part of recreation lands. It's actually, we did research on that. Those are city park lands. The, the guidance we received was that use, as long as that piece of real estate is continued to be owned by the city, it must be used as park, as public park space.
When the market isn't on, in place, they can go on it?
But what it says is that it must be in consistence with the state comprehensive, it's a SCORP, state comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, which OD and I put together, I believe it last updated in twenty-fourteen, from twenty thirteen. We, we double-checked the, the SCORP for the state of Ohio. And it specifically states that farmer's markets are encouraged and they are acceptable uses in public park lands around the state. And that would be for municipal county and state parks, townships, et cetera, so.
Okay, sounds good.
That's, I think that's all I know. What's that?
A big airway.
A lot of work that would need to be done to make a serious decision about that park or that area, but.
I know they promise not to have it smell, but I think it's going to anyway. Is it compatible with the pool development?
That would be part of the planning that would need to be, to take a deep dive into, no pun intended.
Oh, pun.
We've got, we actually have several things at play. One is where it puts parking that's appropriate, because one of the concerns, I've talked to people, is that the, the traffic backing up as everybody tries getting into the farmer's market. You see at the present location, sometimes it backs up because everybody's walking across the parking lot, but depends on where you put the parking. We have East Park Drive, I think it is, is fairly deep, so you could actually have cars stacked there. But the idea is to make sure, if you put the parking in the front end, you'd have the, some confusion there.
But it would be good because you'd have different uses for the same parking lot and so you wouldn't have.
Right, there'd be a lot of shared opportunities there.
That's good.
There was some concern, I think, that council, of course, is the traffic flow at that intersection. We have a light there. We probably have to augment that.
It's an annoying light because.
There's a lot of concern.
Stop everybody.
There's a lot of concerns that, that will need to be addressed before, before a significant, before the decision can ultimately be made. As a, as the committee, as the farmer's market permanent home committee that we were put on, we got to a point where we, you know, we were all volunteers working on this project and we, we don't have the capacity to do a deep analysis of fifteen different pieces of real estate, some of which may or may not be on the market two, three years down the road. And so to really do a detailed site plan, we kind of had to come to consensus about what we think is the best location based on the parameters that the, the farmer's market board was requesting. So we came to this site as our conclusion to try to, to see if that will work and if, if that site does not work for any of those reasons, of course, or for many reasons, maybe the, the cost to the city to maintain over the long term are too great or the traffic impacts are too great, then we can go back and say, okay, let's look at an additional few sites and see what, what we can do.
Is this the only publicly owned one?
It is, as well.
Oh, the price is right, right?
Right. Well, there are two, we did, we did analysis of two pieces of real estate that are Ohio University owned. We never discussed it in detail with Ohio University about any possibilities, but because they're, they're, the university's gone through their master planning process and several of us have been involved with that, it is, it is, in my opinion at least, it's pretty clear that Ohio University does not want to dedicate real estate for a permanent home for a, for a farmer's market at this time because their conversations are really, how do we, we don't have any land, how do, how are we going to, how are we going to move this university, you know, twenty, thirty years down the road based on our current restraints? So.
They should also ask, how is the city going to accommodate forty thousand students?
I don't think we'll get to forty thousand.
I bet we, I bet they imagine it. So you could always hire a traffic cop on Saturday, on the mornings, you know, off duty.
Right.
That's what George said.
Put a roundabout in.
I don't know about a roundabout, but I think there's.
I think you'd have a problem with staging for people trying to get on or off the highway.
Yeah, because it's busy, busy, busy.
It would be backed up at some of the other lights.
And actually, we're still trying to adjust to the, we did not get the modified diversion diamond funding, so we're going to have to look at that whole intersection of thirty-three and East State anyway.
It's probably, probably a blessing you didn't get it because it might have been, made this site impossible.
Possibly, I, I don't know. It's still going to have to be addressed sooner or later.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I think it's a good idea that.
The other one, of course, is repaving East State Street. That's another process that's going to have to occur in the next three years. So, you know.
And swimming pool decisions.
And swimming pool, yes.
And that'll go on three or four years.
And I have heard concerns about the traffic at the intersection there.
Oh, yeah.
So, and again, they, they came to council so they can get the nod to keep delving into it, right?
Yeah.
I, I do want to mention one thing, R ten fifteen, I vetoed that, the Monday night one, just so you know.
Okay.
This is the annexation service, commitment of services for the Lurk Road annexation of forty-seven acres. They basically, there's, our policy is we don't give sewer unless we get the water. What was buried in the resolution is that conditional upon release of the, from LEACs of that water system or, or an agreement that's acceptable. And to me, that was a non-starter, so.
And it's probably more centralized to the services.
It's empty land right now, so.
No, no, I meant the services that are in like UE and places like that where you could pick it up.
The conversation I had with the director is that, right?
I'm sorry.
The conversation I had with Director Stone is that the, the water system, of course, at UE is underutilized because the only phase one and two have actually been triggered. The other side of it, of course, is that if you look and say, if we're relying on the actual water system, it would affect our other services that we are committing to, one being fire, if they can't, there's a question of whether they'll have the flow for hydrants.
I agree, I thought that was.
And therefore, okay, so we commit to fire, we can't get any water. Okay, you can see this scenario being played out. Yeah, out of the pond in front, right.
Yeah, get one of those things.
So they are going to revisit it. It is a fast-track one, the deadline came and went, so therefore they're going to reboot it, I believe, and take out the, that clause about an agreement. At least that's what I understand. I do not know for sure.
And it's, and its connection is across the road?
Yes.
Because there's that big AEP wedge that's not in the city.
That, I believe that's correct, Brent.
And there are other concerns, of course, who would maintain Lurk Road because that'd be, you know, we had the same thing with Armbridge. We service some of Armbridge's inside the city, some of Armbridge's outside the city. I think the concern I heard from some of the township trustees at the regional planning commission, I think, was that there's a bus terminal there for one of the school system beacon, maybe it is, or something like that, Tri-County, I guess. And therefore who, it becomes a high priority maintenance road for snow when you get down to it, any type of ice control. And it'd be a shared responsibility. I'm just letting you know, the latest and greatest.
That's certainly a planning issue.
It is, that's why I brought it up.
Only, only other comment I have is the, the ridges advisory committee, which I, I serve on, there, likely be our final meeting will be this Monday at four PM, I believe, at Baker Center. The, the university has their framework draft completed for that. I've been reviewing it, I think Mayor Wow, you've been reviewing it too.
I'm behind in my reviewing.
Right, I started reading it last night, I spent a couple of hours on it. I'm about halfway through it. For, for the most part, I'm, I'm very pleased with the results of the, the framework and what they're recommending to, to be incorporated to the master plan and what they're taking to the trustees, I think, in October. I think it meets almost most of the goals that we heard from the community during the, the workshops and about the preservation of the, the key buildings up there and so we'll see what happens, but I'm encouraged by, by what I saw in the plan so far. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Paskey, do you have any more than the lots?
Just that we had a BZA meeting Tuesday evening, there was only one case on the agenda, and that was for a parking area in front of a house on a narrow street that doesn't have curb and no, I mean, you, you live in that very situation yourself, Nancy, and they came, they approved it, but they may be coming to the planning commission asking them to look at what to do in this situation of streets throughout town that do not have curb and gutter. As to front yard parking, is it considered front yard? Is it considered? And it has been a dilemma on our end. Mayor, you know about that, many a times we have it throughout town, a couple of places.
Yeah, Central, for instance.
Central's a perfect example, Columbia, Tulane.
Anything that isn't platted, that's why I was.
Well, it's not unnecessarily not platted, it's a situation where there's no curb and gutter, so.
No, no, I mean, a subdivision.
But do you have to meet the twenty-four-hour parking rule? Are you allowed to pull over on the side? If you're doing so, you're in the grass, is that technically front yard parking? But yeah, you might still be in the right of way. It's been a tricky one through.
But they don't even, you know, I guess that the guys that did the gas thing, well, I'm, it's my own hobby horse, but I think right of way is also a problem.
Yeah, so anyways, that, they, they did approve it, but Member Baum suggested that they may put something together to ask the planning commission to take a look at it in the future, so.
I think Ed Baum's up for renewal too. I think he sent me a letter saying he has an interest in being reappointed.
Yes, he told me he would like to do that before you depart. I think he's December?
October, I think.
October, was it? Okay. So.
He sent a letter saying October, could be the end of October.
He told me December, so. In any instance, he does have another.
He's one of those guys. So do we have any previews of coming attractions or can we go back to corridors?
Possibly this annexation.
Lurk Road one?
Yeah, possibly that would be a.
But I mean, it's not, I mean, if there, if he, if the mayor vetoed it, I don't want to do stuff like this at the last minute, especially something as critical as that with all of the obstacles like LEACs, I mean.
Right.
So.
There's no way an annexation with planning this development can just pop up on us? That would.
Right.
I would hope not, because, you know, you have to make decisions for the future and if it's half-baked. So, so maybe we can look at the corridors a bit or else just take a break. I mean, would you be adverse to doing that, going over our cor-? I would like to get that through too. I mean, you know, get it done. We didn't spend all that time on it. And also the stuff that's hanging out there in residential. Do you have those still, Shar? I'm so ambitious, RJ is, should be doing this, but I think that, I think we taught, we dumbed him to death. And corridors first. I think we're both worried, Leary, that will change one word somewhere that will trigger a bunch of changes in this town that are negative.
Yeah, that's my concern.
But I would like.
I don't intend to concern.
Yeah, I would like that anybody who is on Columbus Road know that they can do an equivalent to Hell's Kitchen, because the code is pretty vague on that. And I'd like to either, I'd like to sharpen it up.
You're talking about the B threes?
Yeah. And that was my, that was my corridor. They gave it to me because they figured it wouldn't cause any trouble.
No, no.
Come to find out, I guess I'm causing some trouble. But, you know, I, I'm not adverse to Hell's Kitchen, but I would like to have it. Okay, so we'll do corridors, one way or another. Shar, it's up to you, okay? You can talk to RJ and see if you can get him to decide how we'll do it. I mean, I see things changing all the way around, but there's some general things we could do.
One other issue we did need to discuss, and Shar has it in the, I separated the group homes, the RCFs, from the bed and breakfast language that's going to council.
As a recommendation.
As a recommendation, because there may be some changes to one at the council level, but the RCFs is pretty much, it is what it is because of Supreme Court ruling. Debbie asked me if we can quickly include, I think we still got a quorum, the parking regulations for that, put that in there as well. And I had just put in one parking space per two bedrooms. So, or two residences, what was it, Shar?
Residential care facilities?
Yes. And that's something that, once she takes it through to the city council, she wanted to know if we.
I thought we wanted to just do the one that was at the top. In the parking rigs.
So this is just to get the residential care facilities language taken care of?
Residential care facility language taken care of and includes.
The current code is not.
No, I know, and where's the code?
The code, it's further.
That is correct.
No, no, but where's the code right now? Where was it in the code? Where did you have it?
We didn't, it's, it's not.
Well, no, it isn't per se, but it, it's equivalent is.
Equivalent, I would say, I looked at that, we looked at that that day.
Two for each dwelling unit and one for each additional renter. Now, that doesn't apply, does it?
That's why I say, nothing really, convalescent homes, children's homes, sanitariums, maybe, one for each six beds. I think that's the one we said before.
How about dwellings? All other dwelling units, including those that have been newly, one for each permitted occupant, minimum of two per dwelling unit. I mean, you start doing your occupational therapist, you got your speech therapist.
Again, I throw it out there for discussion. It's, it's, if you wish to go one-to-one ratio, that's, that's, that's fine.
Well, they can go to the zoning board and ask for relief. And furthermore, you know that it doesn't say that we can regulate parking. It says we can regulate bulk controls.
And I consider parking as a bulk control.
Yeah, I don't know. I think they were talking about, when I talked to Lisa.
It's in the same table, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, not to give them any ideas, but I just think it would be, with small lots, it might be a good idea. One per bedroom, every two bedrooms?
I had one.
Do you even have a permanent resident there, a permanent director there? In the usual case? I mean, your information is good, but, you know, it's evolving, changing quickly.
You have staff there, yes.
How many?
Depends on the number of beds.
How many per bed? How many?[1641.66]
You will have, during the course of the day, typically, they'll have two to three full-time staff.
Okay, so then we.
You have to have a minimum of two for safety purposes. So, a six-bed facility or an eight-bed facility would probably have three. Evening or nighttime, probably just under the two.
But then people coming and going, too.
And then you have people coming and going. So if it's a six-bed facility, you know.
I don't think it'll even matter, so maybe we just go with what he's calling it. I just think it's.
You want it more restrictive?
No, I mean, I drive by Echoing Meadows going to Habitat Reaster all the time. You know, they have a lot more cars than you'd imagine. Now, maybe that they're doing big deal kitchen work and all kinds of other stuff. But maybe we need to take it under, I'd do, naturally being, naturally conservative, I would probably go with the more restrictive one, but I don't want it to be a cause celebrity, so.
Like you said, you can go for variances. It's just, we need to get something in there so we can take, get this, with the recommendations already going to council for the, get the other part changed, now we just need to put a parking.
Well, if it's a dwelling unit, then let's, well, what do you think? We only have three people, it has to be unanimous.
I, I'm okay with the one space per two bedrooms. I think my experience with these facilities has been, you rarely have more than a couple of cars.
I think it, yeah, and I think it's going to change. I mean, I think all of our, all of our information may be inadequate. And my point was earlier, that it's not the facility, but it's the inconvenience that often is the deal breaker for individuals in neighborhoods. So, you know, it seemed to me, if you were a developer, you'd develop one that would have a little bit more than you needed, which they never do, but they might. And maybe an extra space wouldn't hurt.
Well, but I think if these are going to be six to eight bedrooms, you are going to have three or four.
And plus the speech therapist and all that. I mean, we don't even, I think the whole thing is evolving right now, so all the old information is not that much good. Mine, you know, for like, my complaints about, that I've heard from people about the one that will remain nameless, that's on the east end, and using every square foot of property, diversify.
Integrated.
Integrated, whatever. All right, I guess we don't have enough people here to do it, because I'm not going to vote for two.
Well, right now, the way it is, is I'd have to pretty much consider it a commatose home, and that's one for each six beds. So if nothing's changed, then it's only one parking space.
I think it isn't a commatose home, I think it's a group home. I think you need to put it someplace so it's.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I know, but you want it in certain, I don't think it's enough spaces. I would err on the side of extra. Okay, so I'm a pain in the neck.
Well, okay, a couple of things. Is it, I know in Zoning Board Appeal, you need three votes. Planning commission, you need three or just a majority?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Okay, well, having completed all our business.
You don't want to address it either.
No, I just want to get going, I guess. Maybe if I had lunch, I wouldn't be so cranky.
They'd like, I know John would like a resolution, I guess it's not going to happen.
They can separate them then.
I guess so.
Yeah, I mean, they'll have Paula on their side.
They could separate and suspend the rules if they needed to, to get it all caught up at the end.
Okay.
It's their decision.
I think it would be wise to buffer it, to make it more acceptable to the neighbors. And that parking is going to be the big deal, I think. It isn't the home part.
I guess I'm trying to visualize where it would end up, that would have, you know, I don't think, I hate to think that they'd build it out and not put enough parking in. I think that would be short-sighted for most of these.
Oh, man, can you imagine that, a developer that doesn't put enough parking?